This.
Oh, wow. That's like an antique.
Yeah.
Vintage.
Okay, it's seven o'clock. I'll call the village new board meeting to order. I look for approval of the agenda.
So.
Second. All favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Close motion carries. Item three, public appearances and citizens comments. Yeah, none. Item four, approval of the consent agenda. I want to make note that we didn't have quorum for finance personnel, so we're just bringing the claims to the board. If you got any questions on the bills. Listed in your packet. I move to approve the consent again.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Close. Carries. New business. Proclamation on Jason Worth on his retirement, the Blair's utilities after thirty years of service. Okay. Whereas it is the desire of the New Blair's Board of Trustees to recognize Jason Worth for thirty years of service to the New Blair's Utilities as water operator and whereas Jason has dedicated his career to ensuring that the Blair's residents and businesses always have safe drinking water, readily available after faucets and a working fire flow system uh to fight fires and whereas Jason's long career in the Blair's provides stability and a wealth of knowledge to the utility department, playing a vital role in maintaining reliability of the infrastructure and that residents depend on every day and whereas over his thirty year career, Jason has sacrificed many weekends and evenings, often challenging conditions to respond to utility emergencies in the Blair's. And whereas Jason has also dedicated himself to continuous education to maintain his water operator credentials and has stayed active with the Wisconsin Rural Water Association. And whereas after thirty years of extraordinary service, Jason has made the decision to retire, making the end of an era of unparalleled commitment to the community and his profession. Now, therefore, on behalf of the Blair's Board of Trustees, I hereby recognize and thank Jason Worth for his thirty years of service to the Blair's Utilities and New Blair's Community dated this fifteenth day, April twenty twenty five.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Thank you. Thank you very much. It's very sweet. Thank you.
And just a reminder for everybody, we're going to be celebrating Jason's retirement next week on Thursday uh with the gathering at two o'clock in the community room. We'll have refreshments and of course the star of the show will be there. So come and stop by and uh thank Jason and wish him well.
Not a star.
Jason, you're a star.
The village has got a very great employer and I appreciate that immensely. Um. Been a great. Right. Yeah. Yeah, not good speeches. I'm not free to speak anymore. When I first took the job, I didn't want to talk with anybody, you know. Uh I even had speech in school and that was like torture. But through the years, I have no trouble talking, uh telling people the way it is, meeting with. I don't know if I could meet with two hundred and proud, but I I definitely have no problem anymore on that. And um it's been great. So I just appreciate everything and and appreciate the opportunity to stay here thirty years. I'm gonna miss it. I I won't. You know, that's for sure. I'm gonna miss it, but I'm also not gonna miss it. Because I'm doing other endeavors and I'll be focused on that. So. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item B proclamation twenty twenty five. Arbor Day.
You can tell.
It's just in the fact that I didn't send it out.
Okay. We don't need. What you need, what you need to read?
I don't know. We do every other year. You don't have. Twenty one.
Okay, Arbor Day proclamation. Whereas in eighteen seventy two, Jay Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for planting trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first absorbed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska and whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious soft soil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for fires and countless other wood products. And whereas trees are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. And whereas villages of nuclear is recognized as Tree City USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation and desires to continue its tree planting ways. Now, therefore, Roger Trump, the president of the Village of Blair's, does hereby proclaim April twenty fifth, twenty twenty five is Arbor Day and May second, twenty twenty five is planting date for the village and urges all citizens to support efforts to care for our trees and woodlands and support our community forestry programs. And further, we urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the hearts and promote the well-being of present and future generations dated this fifteenth day, April twenty twenty five. It's more reading than I've done in ten years. You do well. Okay. Item C considerations discussion, legal license, class B and class C for this rules these.
Petrasino's.
Petrasino's LLC. That's the new pizza restaurant going in. Well, is that the present building that was for sale there that?
Yeah.
Later.
Yes.
I'll do the motel in a little strip.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. They're hoping to open uh in May or June. Um that date hasn't been decided yet, but um the this owner owns another restaurant in Howlandale. Um and it it sounds like it's been successful. So and he also owns a car dealership in Monroe.
Oh, good.
And well, the sad that class B and class C is beer and wine only. So we have no quotas to worry about. Yeah.
I moved to approve the alcohol beverage license application for Petrasino's LLC.
Second.
Hey, any further discussion? And all in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, item D considerations discussion mobile food vendor permit. Well, here you're gonna have to help me. Pierce the phones.
Stephanie Raines.
Stephanie, okay. LLC. I do have a couple of questions on that. On page twenty nine. Bless. Are you the lady?
Me, yeah.
Um where you're gonna be located, you've got the Bills Park, Veterans Park, and then you got six eighteen six them. Are you gonna be up by the um historical village?
I was hoping to I but I was open to other suggestions or options that y'all were aware of. I'm I'm very new to this. This is my I've actually only been open two days over this year. So. But the the two is six eighteen is my personal residence. So.
Oh. Okay.
Well, I have I have concerns also. My first concern is uh is this business competing with one of our present businesses?
Right.
And especially ice cream. Kennedy's really uh does a big business in ice cream when the pool is open.
Right.
So you would be competing with them if you're parked at the village park. And I have concerns about that because they're they're they have a building, they're paying property tax, they're supporting the community. Uh they're a member of the chamber. So I don't like mobile vendors competing with the business we already have. And at Garner Park and the Veterans Park, well, you're gonna be there when they're having an event. And parking is overflowing currently. So where would you be parking your uh truck and trailer?
I don't know that I would necessarily be out there during events. Um it might just be like, hey, it's a nice day. I'm gonna, you know, it's like a Tuesday or something or because I at at this point I had looked at what Kennedy's hours were and I know that this may change as the weather forms up. But presently their hours say that they're closed on Mondays and Tuesdays. So I don't know if I could do Village Park on like a Monday or Tuesday when they're not open. Because then I wouldn't be in direct competition with them. Um if that's an option or um and then I know that you said uh if there's events going on. Obviously, if there are large events going on, I am aware that I would not be able to park in high traffic areas because there are people that are attending those events.
Yeah, because Garner Park, it's vehicles on both sides, always certain third and second avenue going back and Veterans Park too, and they have a baseball game. There isn't much parking there. They overflow into the school parking lot. So uh yeah, so I have concerns. Those are kind of my concerns. Uh uh but if it if she if they were going to well, parking is gonna be a problem. I can't understand whether they could park close at either as there is an event. And I would think you'd want to be there sometime where there's people, you know, because uh.
So you you don't you aren't gonna have like regular days you're gonna be doing this. Like when Jose comes to town, which now Lauren just performed, it's gonna be on Fridays every other week. We know that he well, last year he was here on Mondays every other week from such and such a time for such and such a time, and then he was gone. So you're just gonna kind of do it if you decide you get up in the morning, you're gonna do it or?
Uh well, I was hoping that it would be kind of an open line of communication um and and be able to say, hey, yeah, I mean, if you're like, hey, if you want to come every other Monday, that would be fine as long as Kennedy's because I know that it would be in direct competition with an existing brick and mortar business that yes, if the member of the chamber pays taxes. Um so I don't, I'm not trying to compete on anybody else's business at all. So that's kind of why I was hoping to be here to answer questions and then also yeah, just kind of communicate and see if there were ideas that that you won't have. So I don't want to step on toes.
I I like the idea of having a mobile food truck at like the kids' baseball games or soccer games. I mean, there's definitely I I mean, built a market right there. But um yeah, I do. I I would be concerned about where you'd be. Um how much parking would be taken up and I mean, would you be on the grass? Would you be? I I'd want all that spelled out a lot more clearly.
Okay, yeah, we would not allow them on the grass. It would be in a parking space. The other thing I'll add is that we are starting to allow the school to run concessions at Vets Park this year. Um so that is a potential competition with that, uh which is a fundraiser for the school programs.
So we need to find a way to set it up in a way that we know exactly how it's going to be and where it's going to be. So it doesn't conflict with people that are already doing something here.
I think maybe a good compromise is to test it out with like Mondays at Village Park. Because that's, as you mentioned, not in competition with Kennedy's. Um and it wouldn't be in competition with ball programs either and we'll know where it'll be. We've done it before with the taco truck. So I think that would maybe be a good first step if if the board was interested in proving this. I mean, I definitely think for our office, we need set like a set day time and I and I talked to Melissa about this prior to and we talked about the concerns with businesses that, you know, have brick and mortar, pay taxes. Um and I knew she was flexible to what the board had recommendations for. So I think if we, I agree, I think if we had a set time date, it wasn't in direct competition, um we could definitely see how that goes and, you know, stand from there if if needed and um it's going up. So.
Uh if I can inter interrupt here a bit, um I had the similar concerns that uh Larry did. And my other concern was that oftentimes after soccer games or baseball games, et cetera, families frequent the local businesses, whether it be Kennedy's or Culver's or the Pizzeria. Um, you know, and if you fill yourself up uh at the games with a food truck, perhaps you wouldn't frequent those businesses. So again, that's another concern. I'm not saying that I'm, you know, putting a lid on it. I just I just don't want to upset the, you know, the business district or the business entities that that usually um, you know, serve our community after events.
I feel like we're blowing the whole competition aspect of it aside, you know, out of proportion a little bit. I mean, competition is good for business, in my opinion. And uh I think we put a little too much emphasis on that personally.
We have the power to revoke it if, I mean, if you got a lot of complaints, right?
Uh.
Or would she have to go the year and then reapply?
I would only want to revoke it if there was a serious like breaking law issue, just because I it's not fair to her to approve something and then pull it out because people complained.
I like your idea of Mondays as a starting point.
Yeah, I like that too. Or Mondays and Tuesdays. Why not Mondays and Tuesdays? Kennedy's has closed those two days and that's supposedly a legitimate concern.
She's closed now for those two days, but once it gets warm weather and kids get out of school, I think then she she opens seven days or she's closed month.
That's what it was last year.
We'll start with the Monday and then we can branch it open more. Just to get rolling.
I mean, I'm happy to take the board's direction to like when if it if it expands to Tuesdays, if that's how it ends. I mean, we can I can contact Melissa and we can update her permits um and make sure she has all her stuff she needs. Yeah.
I guess the other thing is I was thinking of uh Veterans Park. There's a tennis court, there's a parking space there. That would be fairly close, you know, if there was a game going on or something because I don't think they serve concessions.
They do now.
We will.
They do.
Yeah, yeah. This year for the first time. Yeah.
Okay.
In a while. Yeah. And I should say they do for high school games. Um I don't know that that's gonna be for.
Yeah, they use it for fundraising for the schools. We should not be competing with them.
Yeah. Okay, I mean, I'm also open to um I'm currently already doing uh doing a percentage of proceeds from sales are going uh I believe it's five percent of oh, I don't want to say, but I want to say it's about five percent are going to uh groundbreaking research at the Carbone Cancer Center in Madison. Um I already have that like money set aside that way from sales um to go. And so if I can, if if the board would like me to do something where like five percent of sales from my time in New Glarus goes towards the school or goes towards community projects, I would be open to that as well.
I think that's up to you. I don't think that should be something we know. We do. No. Can't be telling business what they have to give to events. That would not be right.
So then how do we move forward for that? Do we have to draw or like write something up explaining the parameters?
Yeah, I I think how I would do it with the motion is that you could approve the permit with the parameters that discussed and I would list those in the minutes as Mondays. Um if there's a specific time range that we can come, that would be be nice to have that time range down too. Um like Roger had mentioned, Jose's was usually like eleven to eight or something like that. Um obviously, we prefer all like mobile vendors, direct sellers to be done at dusk or before. Um so that would be helpful. But if we could set that parameter with the motion, um I could make sure the permit states that as well. If that's what the board wants to do.
I move to approve the permit.
With the.
Based on the parameters that.
Um and can I just clarify the time? Melissa, do you have a time range? Um.
Um, I mean, I could do, I mean, if you want me to be out before dusk, I mean, that's, I know that changes depending on the
Right.
year or bit, but I mean, it's like I could do ten to ten five, I could do eleven to eight or seven.
Yeah, I mean, I would say eight eight o'clock is that's kind of been the standard of when it seems that like our previous vendors like this have shut down. So I think that should probably be the latest. And I think on our direct seller permit, we say nothing before. It's either seven or eight AM.
Oh, yeah. No, I'm not either here though.
Yeah. So I think any time frame in between those, you know, the this the eight to eight.
Okay.
Um.
And you're gonna work on a location also?
I'm I I remember the understanding that this is at Village Park on that base.
I would think it's that's okay.
Do you want a specific side of the park?
Um I I don't.
Any parking spot.
Yeah, and it has to be a municipal parking spot on Village Park. Yeah.
Okay. I was just thinking, I don't know if there's many funerals on Monday that I know of. So I don't think that would be a.
Hasn't been an issue with Jose's. Yeah, and I mean, at the end of the day, it's municipal parking. It's not church parking. So, you know.
Okay.
First come, first served.
I will second.
Okay, yes. Um so John is approving um the permit as Mondays at Village Park uh between the hours of eight and eight. That, is that okay? Um and then we can always revisit this if it needs to be expanded.
So will that be on her to come back to us to revisit that?
I I mean, I think that would be ideal. I just because I obviously you're gonna know best out of anybody in terms of your business, how it's going. But obviously, if the board feels compelled to stand it, you guys, well, I don't know.
Yeah.
Um I think it can be a fluid situation. Well, you know, the food truck permits are relatively new for the village in the last few years. So I think we're figuring it out, but I think this sounds like a good plan.
I'm definitely open to forums of communication if there if there's any need for me to come into a meeting and and say, hey, we need to discuss this or or we need to look at things differently. I'm definitely open to that.
Okay.
And Larry, did you second in? I'm sorry.
Yes.
Could you hear what she said, Peggy?
Yes, I did. And it sounds like she's quite workable. So that's that's great.
Okay. Okay. All in favor say aye.
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 Close motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have just vanilla or different?
Right now I'm doing shakes. We'll have uh flavor burst swirl as well. And then um I have door calling coffee, jet links, uh meat products. Um and the ice cream is actually made with sassy cow cranberry milk.
Oh.
Try to support as many shots as we can.
Good, yeah, yeah. Oh, good, good.
We'll give you a call tomorrow too with your permit information.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, item B considerations discussion revolving loan on letter of intent with Green County Development Corporation. Lauren?
Yes. All right, page thirty three. I have a memo. Um so the village currently has a revolving loan fund. Um this was created back in twenty thirteen when we are closing Tid Two. We put money into this program to give out loans to businesses either starting or expanding um to help support the economy, our local economy. Since it was created, we've only given out two loans for a total of forty nine thousand four hundred. Uh we still have one loan that's being paid off and that will conclude in twenty twenty eight. Um we currently in the cap have about sixty one thousand seven hundred and eighty four dollars. And kind of discussion amongst staff and this was part of our goals discussion for the year was to look at how do we utilize these funds better because it's very underutilized and and money just sitting there waiting to get out the door. Um so I started some discussions with GCDC, Green County Development Corporation, to see if maybe they could be a partner with this because they have their own revolving loan fund and they are a common touch point for businesses anyway. And so it might make sense for the village to get out of this game and maybe engage the GCDC to help uh run it. So I had Olivia come to a CDA meeting a couple of months ago and we discussed what that relationship might look like. The CDA was supportive. Um and so I worked with Olivia to draft a letter of intent. So basically, the village would give the funds to GCDC. They would operate the revolving one loan fund for us for only New Glarus businesses. So they currently operate for all Green County businesses, but this money would be set aside just for Glarus. Um this is positive for multiple reasons, one being less administrative burden for us. Um to be honest, I haven't administered one, but it it is time consuming.
Uh.
And it's a lot to learn too. And so if we can kind of streamline that and give the people who know what they're doing, do this, I think that's great. Um and secondly, we're just we're giving the money to somebody who is already interacting with businesses on more frequently. Um so the letter of intent that's included in here, uh I do want to note that um I talked to Bill Morgan, our attorney, about this and had him take a look. He had a few uh minor revisions since adding this to the packet. And he also said that technically CDA should be the ones that approve this. Um but I would love, obviously, your input before I would take it back to CDA to approve it. Um so I guess I'll I'll leave it there. Any questions?
This sounds like it's uh would fall under that innovation grant where you're working with EMTs over uh now that I mean, you're actually starting something new.
Mm hmm.
Uh and and working with another agency. But I don't know if you need that kind of money for this.
Right. Yeah, I think that grant is very specific about transfer. Well, I mean, you're right in a sense that it's about transferring a service to another entity. We have to prove cost savings and that might be the piece that's a little bit more difficult to prove with this. I mean, you could maybe argue my.
Well, your time is very.
Yeah.
Valuable.
Um but yeah, I mean, it's definitely something you could look at. Um but yeah. One, I think.
I like I like what you're doing and having Sam administer since they're doing that anyway.
Yeah.
And you don't really have the time to. So do they charge us a fee then? What if you don't?
Nope.
Good.
Yeah, I think in terms of the innovation grant too, I think this is a pretty simple.
Yeah.
Um nowhere when you get into public safety and EMS and fire and et cetera, policing. I mean, that's much more complicated and a longer longer due process. I think this is a pretty easy transfer if it's something the board is interested in.
So what do you want that to sound like? What are you gonna say?
With the motion?
Yeah.
Uh just that you would approve the letter of intent.
From GCDC?
We are going.
Yeah.
It's gonna go to CDA for final approval, but obviously having the board. Yeah.
Okay, so I'm wishing to approve letter intent. GCDC.
If they leave a motion in the second. All favors say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close motion carries. Item. Item F considerations discussion facade and movement grant guidelines amendment.
All right, so that is on week forty, actually forty one is where the amendment is. Um so this was discussed, I think, at CDA and the Village Board. Um several uh grants that we've given out with side improvement grant have been specifically for window replacements. Hi, thank you. Have been for window replacements and the discussion around that has been, that's not the most aesthetic improvement that we could be doing. Um and so there's discussion on maybe limiting how much funds could go towards that so that you're encouraging them to explore other projects like painting or new siding, et cetera. That's more visually improved.
Yeah.
Improvement.
Yeah.
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 So the amendment here uh basically just says window replacement projects are eligible for up to a three thousand dollar grant. It must be part of a larger larger facade project that includes other improvements that are also eligible for funding. So basically, you're eligible for six thousand grants. This would limit you to only three thousand and you have to do something else to apply for that. Um so the CDA reviewed this and recommended approval. It's now it's here at the board.
It's a good compromise.
We have a lot of good conversation about this, so I feel very comfortable saying that I approve that we make this amendment. Okay.
We need motion second. Any further discussion? There are none. All in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Close motion carries. Item G considerations discussion mini excavator purchase.
All right, so on page forty three, we have a quote for a new mini excavator. Um the electric utility has a trencher right now that is in pretty pretty old and tough to use. Scott, I don't know if you have. Scott, I don't know if you have comments on that, but um. It's pretty old, and especially with some newer utility projects and newer development coming, we're gonna be needing it more and more to dig trenches. So Bill came to me and requested that we look at buying this mini excavator. Um, the Public Works has some funds that they have from selling their tractor, which is used for a similar purpose. For example, Arbor Day tree planting, they use that tractor to dig the holes. And so they would like to use this mini sometimes as well. So they would like to use their proceeds from the tractor sale towards this, so they have ten thousand to give. The rest of the funds will come from bond proceeds from the substation project that we just need to spend on something. So this is a great project for that, something that the department needs.
President trencher might pay for a uh.
Trailer, yes, yep, that's the plan.
Be good.
Yeah, yeah, we don't wanna wear out the trend on that, so.
Can I test drivers before we push?
Outside.
So did you get any other bids?
This is from Bill.
Bill did.
Bill did not, because he wants this brand. Um, and then it's a, uh. I try to say, this is a government discount, so it's through the state bid, so we don't have to bid it if we don't want to.
Okay, I. You know, there's other ones out there that got mini excavators too, and I was just wondering if he. But.
He was familiar with the different brands and said this was the best in his opinion.
They've been in business since nineteen seventeen. I drive by, by, why don't you drive by Bell Line, you go right by it. Okay, well. We're gonna. I'm willing to approve the purchase of the Gator Fells with cereal three.
Second.
Any further discussion? You're none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Item H, consideration resolution twenty five dash seven, appointing summer limited term employees. Good to do.
All right, yeah, so page forty seven, um, we budgeted to hire two parks and rec LTEs and one public works LTE, just like last year. Um, so Owen and Mike are returning, which is awesome. And then we, I would like to hire a new um kid, I think a junior, uh, Thomas Marty Johnson. As our public works LTE. He drove his tractor here to the interview, so. Describe your tractor to.
What brand was it?
International.
Oh.
All assets. I'll move to approve resolution R twenty five dash oh seven, appointing summer limited term employees.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, motion carries. Consideration just last. Mini bit website.
Yeah.
Is that right?
Sure. Okay, on page forty eight, I I just included the email and the pricing. So um, I know we just updated the website to WordPress, which was very much needed just to deal with how old it was. Um, but I recently was recommended Unitbit, actually by Drake Daly, they have it in Lake Mills. And so I did a demo on Friday, and it is amazing. It, it literally handles everything that we've been wanting to do, um, online applications, payment online. Room reservation, except uh event calendar, et cetera, et cetera. Um, and it's only a hundred fifty nine dollars a month. That does not, that covers setup too. There's no additional cost for like support or setup or anything. Um, so I would highly recommend doing this. I think it'll be an amazing improvement for our residents when they're seeking services online. Our website now, while it is updated to WordPress, is still very clunky and not user friendly. Um.
And this will help eliminate some staff time, because we take a lot of calls for rentals. Um, and just like going to over the calendar with people, and I mean, let's streamline that.
And they would handle us potentially converting to dot gov, which is another thing that um I think the village should seriously look at. Um, and then he said that this would be a perfect time to do the conversion. Um, and that's, we think is gonna be a requirement that we'll have to do someday anyway. Um, and so this would be a great opportunity to do that. It won't impact our emails. Our emails would basically just forward to our current email. So you know how all of our emails say at newglarusvillage.com? The, our new emails will be dot gov, but we'll still get the emails from the old emails. We don't have to like update all of our business cards, et cetera, et cetera.
We'll integrate as new people come, we'll change things, but we.
How much did it cost the WordPress update?
It's like two thousand some.
But the plan was still even with that to eventually.
Yeah.
Move on to something better.
Honestly, we should have done the WordPress update many years ago.
Um, I mean, the WordPress update was needed because we were getting, now getting hacked, like.
Yeah.
Hacked in terms of not like, they weren't hacking into village information, but just the, they were attempting to. And so we needed to make sure we had safeguards in place to avoid that.
It's a really good price.
Yeah, can we, can we lock in that rate for five years?
Yeah, he did say that they don't increase prices on existing customers.
Ooh.
Um, that's no guarantee that they'll never increase prices, but at least they're typical. That was that third, and I really kinda asked him about that, because I know that's kind of a boy, so like get you locked in.
Exactly.
He said that's really not their model. Um, I think they like being the more affordable option.
Good.
Um, and then, at least from what Drake told me, that they are also kind of the company that smaller local governments use. Um, and he seemed very knowledgeable about local government, which is a great sign as well.
Is that the Drake that was here?
Yeah, yeah.
I can just picture him.
Yeah.
Yeah, I like him.
How soon could the new website be up and active?
That's a good question. I think. Uh, at least Drake told me, I think it took them like a month.
Oh, that's nothing.
Yeah.
Wow. Do you just need a motion to approve?
Yep.
I will make that motion. Prove Unitbit, is that how you say it?
Sure.
Okay, you can't keep saying that.
Unitbit.
Unitbit. Uh, the purchase of Unitbit for one fifty nine a month to update our website.
Hey, all in favor, say aye.
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 Carries. Item six, consideration discussion library project update. And.
So tomorrow, the site plan and our site trial plan through the planning commission. That's the big news. Um, there's a lot going on behind the scenes right now, getting ready for bid packages. And solidifying our timeline for the project, so um things should start moving basically here, so.
The other update, I'll share, is that the town asked if they could stay a little bit longer. Um, and so we checked with our construction kind of group to make sure it wouldn't impact our timeline, and it was not. So we're gonna let the town stay till the end of the third week of May. Then we'll have Habitat for Humanity come and take out any fixtures that they would like. And then the first week of June will allow the fire department to come in and do training. And then the project will.
So you're gonna.
Bring it. Start. There, no, they're just gonna like do simulation type stuff, like have smoke and have them like go into rooms and.
That's cool.
You know, yeah, so good, great training for people, um, so, yeah, and then the project will start in June. And we're saving the bells. Yeah. I had a dollar for having an aspect question.
Yeah, yeah.
They look like they have a fairly new air conditioner too, that the Habitat could get. Good, good money for. Anyway. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
Okay, now to the president for considerations and discussing the committee appointments forty nine. How many we got, Billy, ladies?
Historical preservation still has two. Uh, all the changes that were made this time around are in orange. And then the yellow highlights are the vacancies.
I have to respectfully decline being on the historical preservation. I'm already on five boards and committees, and I can't do one sixth.
And I remember you saying that.
I kind of said I'd be on the cemetery if I could go off the historical preservation.
Who wants to volunteer to be the chair?
I mean, it's only like.
Oh, yeah, you are the chair.
Yeah.
Yeah. Who else wants to be on the issue?
I, I can, I can find.
Holden. We, we had Holden up to his house.
Okay, great.
So, so John, John is taking Larry's spot. Becca will be actually nominated as the chair on this. And then we did add Holden Brandon, as Larry mentioned. Um, he's filling one of the, uh, Tim Husher was one that also asked to come off. He served quite a while.
You could put Greg Jameson on there. All right, confirm.
I think Holden might.
Okay.
If you're there.
So, yeah, um, do you want, do you want Drake to fill the twenty, the vacancy that will come up now in twenty eight? Or the one that's coming up in twenty six?
Whatever, we'll put him on the long. He needs more projects.
Perfect, so now we are down to one vacancy on historical preservation.
That's so easy.
And it really shouldn't be a board member, just because now we have our two, but if anybody else has any ideas. And then the only other vacancy we have is the town of Extern needs an ETP person, but that's our concern, so.
They gotta provide that.
Yeah, but otherwise.
I should try and get a little tip for you to get hands to put somebody on. Who was weed commissioner before? Here?
Mike Davis. So he's retiring from that post, um, so we are, I guess we're also currently searching for a weed commissioner. Anyone knows anyone?
Yeah.
I tried to find somebody who we want.
Is a lucrative one hundred dollars.
Back in the day, in the sixties, weed meant something.
Larry?
Oh, please don't put that paper.
And it will definitely be in the table.
The only other thing I will know, because most of the changes are board members and upping your terms. So like Larry, if there's any of these committees that you were just really elected, and you don't wanna do anymore, speak now or forever hold your peace. And we got confirmation that the library board is staying as well.
Okay. So we need a motion to approve the.
Correct, with the changes.
With the change. I move to approve the committee appointment.
With changes?
With the change.
Second.
Kate? Anything else from the board? You're none, we are.
I think you need to vote on the last one.
Well, didn't we do, okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Sorry about that. Thank you, Kathy. Yeah. We've done that at County too already. Uh, anything else on the board? You're none, we are.
Thank you.
Paste up things.